If you have your cellphone, would you please turn it to silent for the benefit of all those in here and for the courtesy? We will begin tonight with an invocation for Mr. Charles Chandler.
That's right. Father God, we do thank you for this day and thank you for this community that we live in, for this country, for the state. We pray Father that as we meet tonight, that we make wise decisions. Thank you for the rain you have sent on our land, to water the land for our farmers and our yards, and thank you for that. And we pray Father that all we do and say would honor you and that we would live according to your will, in Jesus' name, amen. As he pledged allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will begin by telling, we're welcome to all visitors who have come here. But the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending board for conditional uses, and we do have several tonight. So we will make a recommendation to the county commissioners for those items, and there will be a final determination made on the first Tuesday in June, which would be June 3rd, 5:30?
Yes.
In this very building, so I'll remind you of that as we go through each agenda item. Item number one, we look at is the approval or the amendment of the minutes from the last meeting. Move to approve for Mr. Lane, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bath, all those in favor? Minutes are approved as written. Agenda item number one. Lloyd Strickland has applied for a conditional use to allow a facility to host private and public functions. The property is located on Bell Road, and Michelle Wilson will be acting as agent. Again, the Board of Commissioners will hear this for a final determination on about 5:30 on June 3rd. Mr. Pope?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna let Ms. Mary Deloach present most of the cases tonight.
Okay, all right, Ms. Deloach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Strickland has amended a conditional use application in order to operate a farmer's market within the subject property. It is located on Bell Road, which is a county-maintained dirt road. The function previously operated in the city of Brooklyn, however, the owners felt it was better suited to operate at the location on Bell Road. The property has historically been used for agricultural use and will remain an ag-zoned, ag-five-zoned property. And as shown in the future development map, this property is located towards the end of Brooklyn-Denmark Road and is within the Royal Open Space Character Area, which supports the use related to agricultural tourism. As shown in the zoning map above, and like stated previously, this property is owned ag-five and is surrounded by other ag-five-zoned properties. And then here is the aerial photo of the parcel. It shows the greenhouses towards the back of the property, and this is where the farmer's market will operate. Here is a copy of the site plan submitted by Mr. Strickland. Sorry. As applicants, applicant stated within the letter of intent, the farmer's market will operate on Saturdays between 2:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. Public Works did not see the number of vehicles being an issue with it being on a dirt road. And then here is a photo of the front of the property. And then this is to, I think this is the east, and then the west, and then this is the south of the property. And then with all of that being said, the staff recommends approval of the conditional use request. The conditions are listed within the staff report.
All right, Ms. Wilson?
Hi. So I'm Michelle Wilson, I am the owner of the Brooklyn Farmer's Market. We were previously at 209 Red Road Street in Brooklyn, and then we, I contracted the greenhouses from Mr. Strickland at 1888 Bell Road, and we felt it was better for us to actually hold a farmer's market there in a more intermittable form and agricultural environment. And so we're wishing to be able to do that.
All right, there is no one signed up to speak for or against, so does this commission have any questions for Ms. Wilson?
I have a question for staff. This is a facility to host private and public functions, why would this be a home business?
Oh, we view it as such a facility because while they also operate a nursery there with the greenhouses, you have multiple vendors coming into a place that it's not just, again, it's not one vendor, so it's an organized event. Almost in a sense like a festival where you have, there's a lot of different moving parts on, in the operations of it and different owners, so.
Mr. Pope, one of the conditions is a zoning reminder, it's the use of the subject to supplemental standards, section 1440. Might you explain what that is for the audience who's here tonight?
Sure. Our zoning ordinance has one section in particular, section 14, which has supplemental standards that apply to specific uses. And this being one of those, those uses, we have in, in the zoning text already laid out a number of items that, as long as that conditional use complies with those items, then that, that goes countywide, not just for this property-specific concern, so we like to just place that zoning reminder in there for, you know, when it comes in for permitting, people tend to forget. So we always throw in zoning reminders that there are other sections that you have to follow.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions for Ms. Wilson? None being, we'll entertain a motion. A motion to approve, is there a second? Second, um, Ms.? Um, all right, all those in favor? opposed? We will recommend approval to the county commissioners on June, June 3rd. Thank you, ma'am. All right, item number two. River Bluff Properties LLC has submitted an application to rezone approximately 61 acres, ag-five square feet to R40, which is a residential 40,000 square feet, for the purpose of creating a single-family fund subdivision. The property is located on Highway 119 Connector, and Jim Anderson will be serving as agent. I will preface this by, by reminding, most of you who've been here before understand that when we have people sign up to speak before or against an agenda item, they are, both sides are given 10 minutes, and if you will look to your right, you will see our clock. And that clock will start at 10 minutes, and we have probably 15 people signed up to speak. So we want to hear from everyone, but just remember, there may be somebody behind you who wants to say something. All right, Mr. Deloach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. River Bluff Properties have submitted an application to rezone the subject property from ag-five to an R40 for the purpose of creating lots for a subdivision. The property is located on Highway 119 Connector, which is a state-maintained road, and the applicant is requesting a total of 59 lots. There are currently no structures on the property, and it has historically been used for agricultural use. Here is the future development map, and as you can see, it's located over in the Ivanhoe area, and it is within the Royal Neighborhood Character Area as well. Here is a photo of the zoning map. It is zoned ag-five, like stated previously, and is surrounded by other adjacent ag-five properties. And then here is a photo of the aerial of the parcel as well. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. We'll come back to. And then here are the photos of. The staff does recommend approval of the request with conditions, and the conditions are also listed within the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Deloach. All right, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Deloach and Madam Chairman. My name is Jim Anderson, I'm a surveyor here in Bullock County. I was sitting down to prepare this today, been, this is my 46th year in Bullock County practicing surveying, so I'm glad I can be with y'all tonight. I represent Mr. Robbie Bell, who is Principal of River Bluff Properties, he's here on my right. And we also have Chris Gohegan, who's an attorney here in Statesboro, who's gonna help us with our restricted covenants and any legal questions you might have, he's sitting right there adjacent to Mr. Bell as well. This property's in the southeast corner of Bullock County, it's on the east side of 119. It's about one mile west of the Agitcha River. And we are asking to rezone this 61.4 acres from ag-five to R40. R40 is, represents 40,000 square feet, which is about nine tenths of an acre. Our design sketch that you see shows a spined road which kind of goes down the middle, we're proposing to pave that road. We're not 100% certain, but our engineer would tell us, we kind of hope to put a crown road with ditches, which is more common in a rural setting, that this is a end, rather than try to go with inverted crown or curving gutter. So we'll try to kind of conform to a rural setting. We're proposing 59 lots. We'd have a private water system that would meet the county fire flow requirements. We built stick-built homes, probably in the 1700, 1800 square foot, which is kind of along staff, staff's review of somewhere around 350, $360,000 homes. We'd have a mailbox kiosk where everybody could pick up their mail at a central location. We'd have a common recreation area that's shown on this sketch, kind of in the center on the south. There would be approximately three acres in size. This property is not located in, in a flood zone, and has a minimum percentage of wetlands within the 61 acres as well. What makes this request a good fit for our growing needs for housing? I'm gonna just pass out the comprehensive land use plan.
I have a circle where we're at in a red circle. It's known as Ivanhoe. And I read, read the dash upon the legend that said we're in a rural, comprehensive land use plan, it's called a rural neighborhood.
So the comprehensive land use plan, where I've circled Ivanhoe, is shaded in a, in a brownish color, and that set aside for rural neighborhood classification. Our property is in this proposed rural neighborhood area. Our request complies with the Bullock County Joint Comprehensive Plan as rural neighborhood. Our proposed density is right in line with what that represents. It, it says that we should have 1.0 units per acre, and we're right at .97 units per acre. We're just a little bit less than that, we've got 61 acres and we've got 50, 59 lots. So we would be right in line with what this, this proposed area is, is been classified into comprehensive land use plan. Staff review shows a neutral impact on public service. In other words, this development would generate more taxes than it would cost the public in expenses, according to staff review. We have good soil for septic tanks. Our interest to our subdivision would have to be GDOT approved by the State of Georgia's Department of Transportation. Highway 119 Connector is considered an arterial route, and this, it should be able to handle the traffic that this subdivision would create. And we're proposing provide approximately three acres of passive part recreation area that we would provide some recreational playground equipment inside. We have no problems with the three conditions that staff has placed on the rezone. One being site-built homes, one being playground equipment in the common area, and one being a sketch plan or a design that would show how this playground equipment would be situated. We have no issues with those conditions. We would ask that you vote in favor of this rezone request. The, the rezone request fits the comprehensive land use plan, and staff has recommended approval. And I quote from staff review, staff review states, "The rural neighborhood character area zoning and design policies align with applicant's request." I thank you for listening to my presentation. Myself or Mr. Bell or Mr. Gohegan would answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, you have almost four minutes left, so we may call you back up. All right, we do have several people signed up to speak, and I will call Mrs. Marilyn Front.
Hi, thank you, my name's Marilyn Fronti, and I live in Guyton, but I work for Bullock County Commissioners. I travel 119 every day. That road cannot handle the amount of people you're putting on it. I was undecided where, if you could go back to one of those pictures of site plan, you have, I think it's, I forget what road. That intersection right there, you have had several accidents since I've lived here for seven years. If you do approve this, that's up to y'all. You need to cut all those trees down so we can see the cars coming. That is the main issue. When you're traveling to Bullock County, you know, from Effingham, you have that turn, you have giant oak trees, you can't even see it. You have cars turning left, and you can't see them coming straight. You need to clear the land if you're gonna approve this, that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am, I will say this, and so this has to go before the county commissioners on June 3rd. It might be a good idea to have pictures, so they can actually see it.
Okay, I need that picture. Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, the second one is Mr. Clint Proudfoot.
Thank y'all, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this. My name is Clint Proudfoot, and behind me are several concerned citizens of Bullock County. We're here today to express serious concern regarding this proposed development near our property and the surrounding area. While I understand the need for growth, this plan raises a number of issues that impact not just our infrastructure, but the safety, health, and well-being of our entire community. I'll begin with this, I moved my family before here back in 2022 to get away from the crazy growth that was happening in Bloomingdale, Georgia. When we found our forever home, we did the research, and the land around us that we were looking at purchasing was all ag-five. Now beautiful farmland in front of us, beautiful farmland beside us, southeast, and then behind us. And we knew that this was what we, what we wanted. This, we met all the neighbors and instantly knew that we had found home. We knew that our quality of life, and our kids' quality of life, would be very high based on the current zonings of ag-fives. We purchased knowing that the chance of a house every five acres being built was possible, but never dreamt that a chance of a one-house every acre subdivision would be built in our front and side yard and along our neighbors. What is the purpose of land even being zoned if we can just ask for it to be rezoned to something different? To begin with our concerns, we will start with the, the issue of infrastructure. The comprehensive plan for this area that we could not find does not currently include water, sewer, or stormwater expansion in this area. With the river located so close, 4,600 feet exactly, to be, to be exact, from the backside of this proposed expansion, installing multiple septic tanks poses an environmental risk we simply cannot ignore. On top of that, drilling a well for this many lots would place a significant strain on, on our, on our already endangered groundwater supply, potentially affecting the water levels for existing residents. Then there's the storm issues. During heavy rainstorms and unfortunate major storm events, the ditches in our area get so full, and they stay full for days. The drainage in this area is already at a major strain. With the addition of proposed driveways, roads, clearing, and filling of land needed for a subdivision, this will just add to the strain so much that it could cause major unnecessary issues and costs for the county. We must also consider the traffic and safety. As she spoke, as many of you know, the intersection near this property is already a dangerous spot. In fact, on February 17th of this year, a survey crew that was on-site to survey was involved in an accident turning onto this property. Since the start of 2024, there have been 31 wrecks at this intersection, with Life Star having, having to land in our, in our front yard to helivac someone with major medical issues to the nearest hospital. Just recently, we saw accidents on February 25th, April 10th, and again on May 2nd. This is just accidents that we've actually witnessed while we were home. This is a clear pattern, and adding more traffic, according to GOT, Georgia DOT, DOT estimates, we're looking at 174 additional vehicles coming out of this, this area. This will only make matters worse. The site is also located 5.2 miles from Stilson Elementary School, where morning congestion is already severe. The roadways between Old River Road, 119C, and the 119 Connector Curve, along with the Ivanhoe Junction, are high-risk zones even without the added burden of increased traffic. The matter of our school system, as 2024, the countywide student enrollment was 11,068, nearing the operational capacity. Our current capacity is 16 students per teacher. The school capacity is 21 to 1. In 2021, the capacity was 13 to 1. That is a 7% increase in just three years. In fact, the district has already declared that it cannot accommodate out-of-district transfers due to space constraints. Based on an average cost of $11,013 per student, this development alone could cost the county approximately $1.28 million annually in school-related expenses. We must also consider the strain of emergency services. At an average cost of $41.76 per person, EMS services alone would cost the county an additional, an additional $11,080 annually, again, from this one development. At one of the accidents that occurred, it took a police officer 22 minutes to, just to arrive to the accident scene. It's noted in the departmental review, that, that, that was also noted in there, so you can tell that it's a, it's a, it's a strain on the EMS services to get there. So with that, the next would be the ongoing problems with waste management, solid waste. The Stilson Eldor Road dump sites are already struggling. Adding more households will only worsen the current trash issues unless those facilities are improved. One other high concern that may not seem important to most is the gopher tortoises that we have on our, close to 800 acres in the area. Although a gopher tortoise may not seem important to most, they are state-protected, and the amount, amount of proposed homes and construction would put a major strain on the tortoise habitats on these properties. It's our understanding that a tortoise, the tortoise relocation process is very costly and a high risk for the tortoises themselves. I would also like to mention that the Georgia Department of Natural Resources is planning to conduct an act of survey, survey of almost 800 connecting acres of our properties for the federally and state-protected endangered eastern indigo snake. This survey is based upon the high numbers of tortoises and promising habitat for the eastern indigo snake. Clearing land from one-acre lots when homes could be a higher negative impact to the population. In conclusion, approving this, this development as it stands would be costly and risky decision, not only in dollars, but in lives, safety, and the long-term sustainability of our community. I respectfully urge you to consider, or the very least delay, this project until these concerns can be fully addressed. If I could, I would like for everyone that is opposed to please stand, and I would like you to see everyone that in our community that are trying to oppose this proposed subdivision. Thank y'all for your time, and hopefully you can understand where we're coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Proudfoot. Sarah Martin? All right, Casey Martin? Linda Smith? All right, Sarah Anderson? And that Brad Anderson? Well, all right, Kenneth Williams? Mary Lee Rogers?
I was not planning on speaking, but I do have a concern. So I own the property to the, I own 47 acres to the right side of where Mr. Bell purchased.
So you are a join, adjoining landowner?
Correct, it was purchased from my brother. So the farmland in the front is farmed currently by Will Grover. He farms that parcel, and he also farms other parts on the other part of the property. He enters his field, his, the fields that he farms, from Mr. Proudfoot's driveway. So when the right-hand side of the field where he proposes to put a subdivision is cut off, then there's no way to enter the other part of the field in which I own that is farmed. So therefore, it would have to, Mr. Grover would have to go around towards Effingham, come up one of those, I don't really want to call it a driveway, but come in one of those entrances and then come back up. There's no way to drive a tractor through the woods to get to the, that side field. So you're basically cutting the entrance out for Mr. Grover to farm the property, so therefore, that, that's a real concern. From what I understand, there's a, proposed to do a, a four-way stop, instead of taking out the curve and putting a four-way stop, that would still be very dangerous to enter the property from that side. It, it's a dangerous intersection to begin with, but either way, it's, it's a really bad spot for that many people to come in and out. That's all I need to say.
And the 10 minutes is up, so Mr. Rogers, were you one of the gentlemen who stood up in opposition? All right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Who would like, you, you still got three minutes to take your second, all right? All right, Mr. Robert Bell, owner of the property, correct?
Yes, ma'am, I'm Robbie Bell, thank you for hearing our application tonight. The neighbors did make some good points, the issues that they brought up are issues that exist generally with every subdivision. You know, we, obviously, when they talk about septic tanks being near the river, we plan on getting Health Department approval. We're not gonna put a septic tank in wetlands, we don't even have any flood plains on this property. Actually, very little wetlands where we're doing this. You know, we don't plan on causing a problem with their wells, but you know, the county, Bullock County's in the process of installing wells that will take far more water than we would take. I would imagine one of their wells would take in a day what we might take in several years. I don't think that's an issue. We would have to do a traffic study of some port and go through DOT. DOT might would require a turn lane, and we will do whatever requirements that DOT puts on us. But you know, as far as the, the schools being full and our emergency services, you know, I know there were things that the commissioners are discussing right now, and it's not specific to this particular development. There's issues, of course, throughout Bullock County, and we have people that are continuing to move to Bullock County. And over time, more schools will have to be built, more sheriff's deputies will have to be hired. I know there's also a plan to put a substation on the lower part of the county. As a matter of fact, we donated a piece of property for that several years ago, that's not that far from this, right there on 119. Really, the, the final point I'll make is that, you know, there is a comprehensive land use plan that has been in effect for many years, and it was just updated a couple of years ago. So the update, which shows this area as rural neighborhood, it was there, it was included in the update. And I've been coming here for many years, and y'all drill in my head, comprehensive land use plan. We have a project that complies completely with the comprehensive land use plan. The density, the location, you know, we could have come in here and said, hey, we want to do R25. No, we said we're going to do R40, we're trying to comply with the plan. I believe we have complied with the plan, and we would ask that you approve our project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions from this board for these gentlemen? Mr. Bath?
James, has the ordinance changed where it's over 50 houses, you gotta have two entrances?
For the two entrances, yes, it changed.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Now, this will go before the county commissioners, whatever we recommend. And so I suggest that you've got a couple of weeks now that you may be able to get together with some of these community members and, and, and talk to them and see if you can come to terms. But that being said, if there are no more questions, you have a question?
Yeah. When will the traffic study be done?
Um, trying to think since we're in between engineers, but, um, the ordinance also changed, I guess, in December about being a rigid five hundred trips per day, so it's by scope from the engineer. So, um, I think the, the primary issue was with GDOT and the traffic, traffic study for GDOT, um, and getting their driveway permit. Um, but we certainly have that by a sketch plan approval.
Okay. Mr. Bell, you own two other pieces of property adjacent this. Which ones are they on the map?
They would be to the right kind of along one nineteen, that, uh, triangular piece.
Okay.
It's a total of one hundred and forty-five acres operating, so we're only looking to develop just the front sixty acres approximately. We're not seeking to develop the remaining eighty-five acres.
Any other questions? With that, we'll entertain a motion of recommendation.
Make a motion to deny.
Got a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of denial, raise your hand. All those opposed, one. All right, we're going to recommend denial to the county commissioners, five-thirty, June third, in this room. Thank you, Mr. Bell. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if y'all will move on out, we still have several other items, so thank you for moving on. Uh, we don't have a deputy here tonight, I see. Well, Patrick's back there, we can get. Well, you get one door, y'all get the other. All right, we'll move on to, um, agenda item number three. American Aero Real Estate LLC has submitted an application for a conditional use to operate a light manufacturing facility. The property is located on U S Highway eighty east. Will there be another agent here since Mr. Russian is not in attendance? Chris Goheagan, okay. Mr. Loach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. American Aero has submitted a conditional use application in order to operate a light manufacturing facility for an aerospace parts industry. It is located on U S Highway eighty east, which is a state-maintained road. Um, the property was the previous location of W K Jones Lumber and was historically used for a light industrial use. As you can see, the property is located, um, south of Brooklyn and is within the suburban neighborhood character area. And then here is a picture of the zoning map, and the property is currently zoned light industrial with conditions, and it's surrounded by highway commercial zone property with conditions and Ag five zone properties. Here is a photo of the aerial of the parcel. And then here is the site plan submitted by the applicant. And then here's, um, the photo of the front architectural elevation. The following photos. The staff recommends approval of the conditional request, conditional use request. The conditions are in the staff report.
Mr. Goheagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'm Chris Goheagan. I'm an attorney with Talby Rushing. I hate that everyone left because I've got a very exciting project to present to you tonight, um, and I hope you'll view it in the same light that I do. Pleased to be here tonight on behalf of American Aero to seek your recommendation for approval of a conditional use permit for light manufacturing operations on this site located at one six two seven four U S Highway eighty east in Brooklyn. Uh, this property is zoned light industrial. Um, and I'm pleased to be joined tonight by Kelsey Connor, founder and CEO of American Aero, uh, who is also here in support of this application. You may not realize it, but American Aero is one of our great local success stories. Uh, they manufacture interior components for private aircraft, and their products can be found in some of the finest aircrafts in the skies, many of which are probably flying over us this evening. Uh, their current site is located at one six two seven four Highway eighty east, which is just across Highway eighty from this parcel in the little triangular section. If you go back, there you go. You can see the top of it right there in that triangular section of property. Um, American Aero was founded in two thousand and eighteen with four employees. Today, they have ninety employees. With your support and the approval of the commission, in this new facility, they'll have the capacity to employ two hundred members of our community, traditionally seventy-five percent of which come directly from Bullock County. So we have a very exciting project for a very successful and up-and-coming company, and we hope you look favorably on it. The current site, um, which is located across Highway eighty, is one point five three acres, and it's zoned commercial. The new site is fifteen point two four acres, and it's already zoned light industrial. As mentioned in the staff report, this is, this site was the former home of the W K Jones Sawdust and Lumber Facility and has typically been used for industrial processing, uh, most of which has been much more loud, noisy, and dusty than what we will do with this project. Uh, as you can see on the map, it's a large site with a considerable vegetative buffer to all sides except on eighty where it's got a highway buffer. Um, specifically to the south is property owned by W M Shepherd Lumber Company. To the west is agricultural land owned by the Cromley Family Farm. To the east is Highway eighty, and to the north is a strip of vacant land, on the other side of which is a very small residential community. Uh, large buffers between any inhabited adjoining use, which we feel like adds to the appeal of this site. There are a number of really interesting, attractive features about this site and this project that I think are important for your consideration and that warrant approval of this request. One hundred percent of the current activities for American Aero are located within the existing facility. With approval, ninety percent of those operations roughly will move to the new site. And that's going to be a forty-five thousand square foot purpose-built new construction facility designed specifically for this manufacturing process. This is a fully enclosed manufacturing process, which means there is no manufacturing that takes place outside of the four walls of this facility. When you compare that to a lumber mill, which traditionally operated on this site, which is almost one hundred percent exterior manufacturing processes, um, I think this will be a much more, um, user-friendly, community-friendly manufacturing process and, and will be a better fit for the neighborhood. Um, when constructed, this site will be fully fenced in, uh, so there's no risk of anyone mistakenly making their way onto the facility. This is not a business that's open to the public, which means you don't have, um, you know, just routine traffic coming in and out. The only traffic that comes in and out of this site is for delivery and haul-off, all of which takes place during the day shift. There is no ti, no nighttime delivery, no nighttime haul-off. There will be no noise associated with the facility externally in the evenings. Uh, there is an onsite well for all the water needs. The only light that will be generated by this project is light to light the employee parking lot and light for security. Uh, lighting is one of the conditions of the staff recommendation, and, and it's a totally agreeable condition because we have no need for considerable light on the outside. It's interesting, uh, many manufacturing processes results in either require hazardous materials in their process or generate hazardous materials in their process. There are none required for American Aero's processes and none created by those processes. In fact, and what I think is a really interesting and cool part about what they do, because their products go on aircraft, all of their products are self-extinguishing. They will not catch fire. They generate zero fumes. Um, so although there is a well on site for the water needs, there's going to be no need for a fire suppression system, and there's no risk to the community of fumes escaping from this facility. Um, so with larger manufacturing, one of the biggest concerns you have is what happens in the event of a fire? How long does it burn? How is it contained? None of that is a risk with this facility, which I think is really attractive and, and really cool. Um, we want to thank Mr. Pope, Mr. Loach, all of the members of staff for their work on the report and their recommendation for approval. Um, the report notes, and, and we agree, that this project fully aligns with the comprehensive land use plan. Uh, this project fully aligns with all of the standards for a conditional use permit, and all of the conditions recommended by staff are acceptable to us, and, and we agree with them. Also want to note, uh, that every use that exists inside of our county industrial parks is zoned light industrial. And this project is also zoned light industrial. Consider the types of activities that take place at Great Dane and Viricon, which are suitable and acceptable to the commission, and consider the types of processes that I've outlined for you that are going to take place in American Aero. We really think this is a really low-cost manufacturing process for the county in terms of its impact on the community. Um, also want to note that those projects receive considerable tax abatement and, and incentives. American Aero has received none and is asking for none. We're just asking for your consideration of this, uh, project and your recommendation to the county commission that it be approved with staff conditions. We thank you for your consideration. I'll reserve the balance of my time to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Goheagan. Are there any questions for either he or the owner, Ms. Connor? There being no questions, we will entertain a motion. All right, for Mr. Chandler, a second for Mr. Lane. We will recommend approval for this conditional use of the county commissioner. All those in favor? With the conditions, with both conditions. All those opposed unanimously, we will recommend approval before the county commissioners, June third. Item number four. Stephen and Anna Lewis submitted an application for a variance pursuant to Section four eleven, medical hardship. The property is located on Sinkhole Road. Mr. Loach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen and Anna Lewis have submitted a medical hardship variance application for the property located on Sinkhole Road. The staff and applicant have worked together to acquire a doctor's note in which shows the need for the requested variance. Um, here it is on the future development map. And then here is the zoning map. It is Ag five, and the surrounding properties are also Ag five.
That you have received a medical form?
Yes, ma'am.
And if we can remember correctly, um, after this medical hardship ceases to exist, they have a certain amount of time to remove the second structure. Is that correct?
Correct. Oh, thirty days.
Thirty days. And the applicant understands those requirements. Thank you. All right, um, is there anything that the Lewis's would like to say? Are they here?
Yeah.
And your name is?
My name, uh, Stephen, Jason Lewis. I go by Jason.
All right, Stephen, Jason Lewis.
My wife was diagnosed July the twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-two with ALS. I got a fourteen, six, and three-year-old. Uh, my mother and stepfather, they live in Swansboro, and, uh, so they're gonna move over to help, help me and take care of everything. And, uh, one hundred and thirty-four days deep is pretty rough. But, um, but now, are you saying after their need, so, I guess you say?
If the medical hardship ceases to exist, that's all.
Okay, but they still be able to be on the property, right?
But they have to come back before us because that's, um, a medical hardship requirement that?
Yeah, so we send out annual letters and, you know, just re-up it with, with the doctor's note. Um, there would be options down the road if that was the case, that you wanted the house to stay, you'd have to rezone it.
No, that's what I'm saying, because they're, they're selling, they've already sold their lake house. They're selling their property in Swansboro. Uh,
And they need a place to live.
They need a place to live. They invest, and they've already bought a, a mobile home. Uh, they're gonna be doing a septic tank well, every essential it takes to live day-to-day. So that's what, when I heard you say that, that's what made me speak.
Well, I think in the immediate term, this would be the easiest, but, uh, being family, they could split it out into an acre. Deed it over. I mean, I think there's, this was the more immediate solution to the issue.
Yeah, 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 because of financial and everything else. Uh, we don't, we don't get anything from the government at all, excuse me, at all, zero, nothing. She was a teacher for six years in Bryan County, didn't pay social security, so therefore she is not eligible. I worked for George, uh, Department of Corrections, fourteen and a half years, and worked for George Correctional Industries. Uh, I was operation manager of the beef unit. I had a cow hit me in the back, moved my spine down to grade four. I had her have, uh, broke my two bottom screws, I had titanium hardware on the left, eight-hundred-pound girland, didn't see it coming. So that's what I'm dealing with, and we have zero help.
Very understandable. Our hearts go out to you and your family.
I appreciate it.
All right, um, if there are no questions, are there any questions in this board?
Just so he understands, when the medical hardship ceases to exist, you can come back and divide your land, and they could have their land divided for them, and you still have your land.
That's what I wanted to make sure. But in order for them to be there, they are gonna have to be deeded out, whatever, acres?
Eventually.
Eventually, but that's a long way down the road, hopefully.
Oh.
All right, any other questions? If not, a motion? A motion for Mr. Chandler to approve, a second for Mr. Lane. All those in favor? Medical hardship, the variance is granted. All right, agenda item number five. Sharon Hill has submitted an application for a conditional use to operate a daycare facility within a residential neighborhood. The property is located at six oh nine Sweetheart Lane. Mr., Mr. Loach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sharon Hill has submitted this application for a conditional use in order to operate a daycare facility in the residential neighborhood, which will accommodate up to ten children. The property is located on Sweetheart Lane, which is a local county paved road. Of course, sorry, sorry about that. According to the future development map, the property is located east of Statesboro, right outside the city limits, which is in the suburban neighborhood character area. And then here is the zoning map. It is next to, um, it's R twenty-five, which is surrounded by other R twenty-five zone properties and then a light industrial. And then here is the aerial. Okay, sorry about that.
All right, Ms. Hill?
Hi, thank you guys for being here, and thank you guys for listening to me. Once again, my name is Sharon Hill, and me and my husband actually live, um, at the location six oh nine Sweetheart Lane, um, out by Mill Creek, behind the church, um, First Baptist. And I'm asking for the conditional use so I can continue to operate, uh, and also to meet the, um, continues with the, uh, uh, the compliance of the state. And, um, in order to do that, I would have to come here and do what I'm doing today and try to get approval so that I could stay in compliance with the state. Um, like, um, Ms., is your Ms. H? No, you're Mary. Like Mary said, um, I will actually have, um, ten children, um, ages zero to five. And I actually, um, surrender services to, um, single moms right now. And, um, my ages, like I said, once again, are zero to five years old. And, um, we only have one that comes in the afternoon. So right now, a total of seven kids right now that I have. But I actually been, um, I guess, the actual fire marshal said I could operate with fourteen kids, but I'm gonna keep it to a, a minimum because I actually do a lot more with them, trying to get them ready for, um, public school system. So I would like to ask you guys if you guys would, um, um, grant me the actual ability to be able to, uh, receive a conditional loan so that I can continue, um, providing the service that I provide to the children in Bullock County, and also to remain in compliance with the state of Georgia.
Ma'am, there is no one signed up to speak against or for? So are there any questions from this commission? All right, Mr. Bass?
James, my question's more for you. I know in the, we've had a few of these over the past few months and we've always had a condition of a fenced-in yard. Is there any reason that we're not, in all fairness to the rest of these applicants, is there any reason we're not requiring one for this one?
Oh, the, the previous ones, I think, might have just been added as a level of precaution. But the, the supplemental standards do require some fencing for, um, there's a certain square footage per child fenced in. If, if they have an outside play area, I don't think it's required that you have an outside play area.
Uh, it look, it looks like there's one in this picture.
Right against the house, there's some kind of slide.
No slide, there's, that's actually, uh, a house, a little house they can play in. And it's also a, um, a bus that they also get in. Um, but we actually, with the state, we can actually take them to the park. So that's what we've been doing. We go up to the local park and take them there. Because actually, the act, the toys that we have out there, it was donated to me. And we actually, we know that we cannot have it without a fenced and yard. And so, um, we just decided that we were just gonna go to the actual local park. And as long as I actually have indoor activities for them, um, I can either choose as we can go to the park or we can actually stay inside. So at this moment, we are inside.
And you transport these children how?
I have vehicles.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? A motion to recommend approval, is there a second? Is there a second? If there's not, then that motion will need to be retracted and another issued.
Can I also say something? I've been operating, um, up under a license, um, from the county, um, since twenty-twenty, uh, since twenty-twenty-three. So, I mean, I've already been operating under that license. And if that was the case, if it's not gonna be approved, that was the case, if something should have been said then. Cause I actually been operating under that license since twenty-twenty-three, that was issued to me.
And the circumstances for coming back before this board are?
Yeah, um, at the time of business license, occupational tax certificate was, was issued. Um, but I think, if I recall, it goes back to twenty-nineteen. You may have been operating there more or less as a babysitting service, if I recall our conversation.
Um, actually, I had a babysitting service and that's what I was operating since twenty-nineteen.
So it was more like a home occupation?
Mm-hmm.
And then in preparation of her going to the state and getting licensed as a daycare, the state requires a letter, a zoning letter that states that, you know, that use is allowed there. Um, and so that's when it was brought to my attention and, you know, digging the ordinance and, you know, it's conditional use, so that's why we're here tonight.
So if you already got prior approval from the state contingent on this letter from the zoning board? Or from the county commissioners, because this is conditional use?
Jeff, is, there's, can we require a fence? Is that something we can add?
Sure, yeah, you can add that as a condition.
You know, I'd, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve it with, with a fence.
Add that condition?
Correct.
All right.
And where do you need to be more specific, maybe about where, where will the fence?
I'd leave that up to James, but, you know, we, we, we don't ever determine where they go. I know James has done that in the past and I'd be fine with that now.
You're, you're suggesting a condition that would?
Yeah, this.
The same thing we've done all the last, sorry, last four or five that we've done.
All right, with adding a condition of a fenced-in backyard, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it with the condition.
All right, so a motion to approve, now is there a second? All right, there's a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? That's unanimous. All right, we will recommend approval on the condition that you add a fence.
Yes ma'am, I will do.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item number six. Frank Joe LLC has submitted an application for a sketch plan to divide ninety-four acres into sixty-eight residential lots. The property is located on Horace Mitchell Road. Mr. Loach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This application was submitted for a sketch plan to divide the ninety-four acres into sixty-eight residential lots. The road layout varies from the previous site plan, which was submitted in the rezon case in twenty-twenty-four. The property is located on Horace Mitchell Road, which is a local, local county man- maintained road. According to the future development map, the property is located south of the Denmark area and is when, was it, excuse me, is within this Georgia sixty-seven and commercialized character area. Here is a picture of the zoning map, it's Ag five and it is surrounded by other Ag five properties along with the R eighty with conditions.
Well, I was gonna say, the zoning map gets updated through the access officer's office, so that's why it shows it being Ag five, but it is zoned to R twenty-five.
R twenty-five at present time, okay.
And then here is the aerial of the parcel. And here is a copy of the sketch plan submitted by the applicant.
Leave that up. Go back to it.
Yes ma'am.
All right, Mr. Ryan Poitras is acting as agent.
I'll cover for Ryan today. Uh, my name is Nick McCall.
Nick McCall, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good afternoon, I just wanted to present y'all this subdivision. We're proposing sixty-eight lots with county-maintained roads and ditches that will be crowned asphalt pavement. Uh, it, like Ms. Deloach said, it's already been rezoned to R twenty-five, so that means that each lot will be twenty-five thousand square feet minimum, which is a little over half an acre. Uh, each lot will have a septic system and there will be a private community well that'll serve all the lots. Uh, the plans have already been fully engineered, so I can say that they meet all of Bullock County stormwater ordinances. There will be a mail kiosk about the center of the property there, on the same site as the well. So there's a community mail kiosk that everybody will get their mail from. A traffic study's been completed and that traffic study did confirm that roadway improvements are not required along Horace Mitchell Road. And I think that's about all I got, so thank you for your time.
Um, any green space area for?
There's no designated green space area, but the, uh, the houses each, I mean, the lots are twenty-five thousand square feet, so there should be a substantial-sized yard.
Any questions for Mr. McCall?
Sir? One entrance.
Sufficient enough for emergency vehicles?
I'm sorry, can we?
Why are we not requiring more than?
One entrance, hitting this, adding on to what we already approved there? Didn't we approve this subdivision last year?
Um, we, we approved the zoning. So now they're coming in under the new, you know, the revised subdivision ordinance after December was our latest changes that the home builders put up. And so the secondary entrance would not be required.
That's a long way from the front to the back.
And emergency vehicles?
Originally, they had a, uh, emergency entrance in the back.
There is an emergency entrance about, it's, it's about midways through that loop there in the middle. Um, but there is a cul-de-sac and it meets Bullock County standards on the length the road can be ending at a cul-de-sac.
The emergency access is proposed through Rob's Lane off of Horace Mitchell too. So there is an access granted and we will have these two access.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion for the sketch plan? Move to approve, is there a second? Second, Mr. Bass, all those in favor? No opposition, all right, sketch plan is approved, thank you. Item number eight. Mayberry Land Holdings LLC. Okay, Chesley Enterprises Incorporated has submitted an application for a sketch plan to divide twenty-five acres into five residential lots. This property is located on Birdson Road and Mr. Patrick Patton will be acting as the agent. Mr. Loach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This application for the sketch plan is to divide the property into lots for residential use. The property is located on Birdson Road, which is a local county paved road. Um, according to the future development map, it is located with the southeast portion of the county and it is within the Black Creek character area. And then it is zoned Ag five and is surrounded by Ag five zone properties as well. Here is the aerial. Um, this property previously came before the board for a rezon request in March and was recommended for denial by the staff due to what is listed within the flood ordinance. However, with the new sketch plan, the staff recommend approval as it does about that. Here is the sketch plan.
All right, Mr. Patton?
Good evening. So, we've come back for you, uh, with five lots on twenty-five acres to be zoned Ag five. We're going to run a dirt road down the, I guess, the, is that the northern border? Eastern side, maybe, of the property to access all five lots. It will create a minor subdivision, um, and it's pretty straightforward. Uh, each property will have its own well. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything I can for you.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Patton?
Good.
No questions, is there a motion?
Motion to.
Motion to approve for Mr. Lane, a second.
Okay.
Mr. Chandler, sketch plan is approved, yes? I'll vote, I'm half a great, all right, all those in favor?
A few more.
Any opposition? Uh, all right, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Sketch plan is approved. Now we go to Mayberry. All right, Mayberry Land Holdings LLC has submitted a streetlight special tax division application for a new development. The subdivision is located on Josh Deal Road. Very straightforward, um, if there are any questions, I guess the questions would be for Mr. Ms. Deloach or Mr. Pope?
Um, so this streetlight district, um, is for the Mayberry subdivision, obviously, as stated, but there's houses, you know, under construction now in that, in the development, the, the lights are installed, uh, and it was, uh, you know, this plan has shown meets our expectation for what a streetlight tax district should be in these neighborhoods, um, developer and EMC working with us to make sure that it's something that was equitable across, uh, you know, across the neighborhood. And so we feel comfortable in recommending approval for this, uh, special tax district.
As James, it's the Mayberry subdivision, is that the name of it? May, Mayberry?
Mayberry Land Holdings.
Mayberry.
Just Mayberry, 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 okay. I just, there's a letter from EMC in here about Cornerstone Point, but I guess that's.
And there on this, on the sketch plan site, it says Georgia Power down here too. On Four Seasons Drive, it's got.
Yeah, the plan is for Mayberry, I think the letter was, um, we didn't get a number of these, I think it was kind of thrown in there.
Assuming you have the letter from Mayberry.
No, I, I do think we have the letter, um. Oh. But the, the plan comes through the power company, so.
The final.
I think the, the letter just got mixed in.
Is the, so the final plan's been recorded though?
Final plan's been recorded under a bond.
A developer applying as a new subdivision?
Okay.
Um, our staff report says that the Planning and Zoning Commission had approved this preliminary plat in May of two thousand twenty-five. Um, we haven't had another meeting, so is that date correct?
Obviously, I don't think so. Probably twenty-four.
All right, at May of twenty-four.
Yeah, like I say, the roads are, roads are in, houses are going up and the, uh, the final plat's been recorded under a performance bond for the water streets, the streetlight district and all that.
All right, so Mr. Loach did find the letter, so we do have it on hand. I don't know that you need to do that or need to do it back. All right, with that being said, and are there any other questions? Is there a motion? Approved, all right, second for Mr. Lane, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Um, that stops here, we can, we make final determination for the streetlight or does it have to go to the county?
Yeah, well, that's why I was asking if the plat had been recorded because we wait till the plat's been, sometimes y'all approve them before the plat's actually been recorded. So we should be able to get this one on the next, uh, commissioners meeting.
So it has to go before the final determination for the commissioners?
Yeah, they actually create a special district.
All right, so it'll be heard in June third then, correct? All right.
The what now?
It'll be heard on June third.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, is there any other business we need to conduct tonight? We got a motion to adjourn, is there a second for Mr. Lane, all those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.